Hello everyone, it is August 8th, 2023. It is 6:02 PM. We are calling to order the class at Select Board. Let me start with a roll call. Mr. Flex?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Present, Ellen Mar.
Mr. Creighton?
Right in here.
Jeanne Hailey, Depple, here. All right, all are invited to join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, the first item is executive session. We have two exemptions we're dealing with. The first is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of a public body and the chair so declares. The board will discuss the navigation bylaw and the chair so declares that exemption three applies. We're also going to be discussing exemption six. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, the chair so declares here where the board will discuss a potential property acquisition. We are going to be in executive session from 6 o'clock to approximately 7:15. I would like to invite a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those, I have to do a roll call vote for executive session. Mr. Flex?
In favor.
Mr. Creighton?
Uh, Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jeanne Hailey, Depple, aye. All right, we're gonna convene and we hope to be back around 7:15. Thank you.
All right, so we are back on at 7:33. We are come back on a little bit late, apologies for that. Justin, is there any public comment, which is our...
No, I do not have anybody with their hand up.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to licenses and permits. St. Stevens Annual Picnic, Sunday, September 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Does the board have any questions? Is there anyone in the license?
I've got you quickly.
Okay, great.
Hi, boy, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Chief.
Hey there, good evening. These are all recurring events that we've had every year. They've been vetted, there's plans in place, and everything.
All right, well, Chief, as long as we have you here publicly, happy birthday. Happy birthday. Okay, so thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions on these permits or license requests? Okay, so I would entertain a motion for the first one, for St. Stevens Annual Picnic, Sunday.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one is opposed. All right, so McCourt Foundation Tour, South Shore, Saturday, September 23rd, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
No one is opposed. All right, Thanks For Giving, 5K Race Event, Thursday, November 23rd, 7:30 to 10:00 a.m. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Justin, before we move on to the next item, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to discuss or promote their event?
I do not have anybody with their, with their stuff.
Okay. Okay. All right, now we're coming to board and committee appointments. We do have an availability right now for a select board rep to be appointed to the Affordable Housing Trust if anyone is interested. I know we have a lot going on too, so we could also table this for a little later, but I just wanted to invite anyone who was interested in being a rep to raise their hand. All right, why don't I suggest that, let's table this for now. I will reach out to the chair of the trust and make sure they have a sufficient amount of people. I'm willing to do it, although I'm pretty busy right now, and so...
I would do, as you and I spoke, I would do it if there were evenings or something, but 8:45 on Wednesdays, I'm knee-deep in customs, so I just...
Okay, okay. Maybe you and I can see if they have any flexibility on...
Okay.
Timing, okay, because I think that would be lovely.
I'd do it, but I have a root inside of our CPC, so I think they're gonna coincide.
Yeah, okay. All right, why don't we table that for now, and we can dig in a little more on...
Okay.
The timing of that. All right, but thank you for being willing to do that. So we have proposed cemetery, we have proposed rules and regulations as to cemetery. Chris, do you want to provide a little?
So, yes, some context, but also I think, I talked to Glenn today, Glenn Brim, he likes to defer this a little bit further, since this may have to go to bylaw, it turns out.
Okay.
They might want time to think about it and then prepare something. So if the select board doesn't have to do, really doesn't have to do anything, adopt it, or I should say, propose it for a special kind of meeting, yeah, there wouldn't be any action taken. Well, what this is, is just an update of the regs and fees, which is all good, and that said, I think town council's opinion seems to be, or is, that this actually probably has to go to a lot of...
Does anyone have any questions about it before we table it?
I do. So, I was just curious, because I looked for this online, we got the, you know, the proposal in our packet, but nowhere on our website do we have a cemetery commission, and then reading the attorney's, you know, red line...
You are the semi-
We are the cemetery commission, right, but there's no fees, or...
There are up at, there are at DPW, so they're all maintained there. I don't know that there's any on the website.
No.
They've been established for some time.
Or shouldn't they be on the website?
I don't know that they're, I'll look into it if not.
If they're under like a general fee thing, I didn't look there, I was specifically searching cemetery. I did see DPW is in charge of maintenance of the cemeteries and the sales and the records, but not having the context of what this was was a little bit, a little bit challenging. And I understand we are the cemetery commissioners.
We have to get you on the packet, all the regs were done a couple of months ago, just a couple of months, I have to make sure that the existing ones-
Yeah, I think they were in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
But again, this is, I think, a bigger conversation about a bylaw now.
Bylaw, okay.
So it sounds like for next time, when we come, when we have the recommended bylaw come back, we probably want to make sure we've got the fees, at least the fees currently in place right now on the website, and are there any other substantive additions folks want to make on the regs, the rules? I did notice that, and I don't know if this is an issue, I know it is with, in some cemeteries like Arlington, there should be a no-running rule in the cemeteries.
Jogging rule?
Yeah, no jogging. Some people like to do that, it's not appropriate in a cemetery. There's a bunch of no things, we should just add in running. That was my only thing that I saw. So, okay, anything else before we move on to the next one? We're right on track. Okay, so legal services agreement, William Solomon, Verizon Cable, license renewal.
So the, these were renewed three years ago, and Comcast did a 10-year, and normally Verizon would have done a 10, but they didn't want to, they placed, they said, well, getting out of the cable, we're all going to be online. Well, that didn't come to pass, so they're looking to renew for another five years, which would put them back into cycling. Comcast, Attorney Solomon did it last time, that's what he, that's all he does now, he specializes just in this, he did a very good deal for us last time. And basically, this will be fairly simple, because I think it'll just be taking the credit normally five years forward. That said, he did all of it. Last time also, the board made sure that the cable station or the cable commission paid for the legal fees, because it's benefiting at the end of the day, 1432, so, but this is basically the same, it's more limited, because it's a shorter agreement, it's going to be shorter, the terms and conditions are pretty much the same as they were three years ago. I would, again, I would recommend that we just go, Mr. Solomon, their last time, it should be very simple, and it'll be paid out of the funds that 1432 already has.
Does anyone have any?
I'd make, no. I'm just gonna make a motion.
I'm just gonna call people to ask questions if they want to.
My fault.
If no one has a question?
Yes, Mr. Grady.
Make a motion to approve the legal service agreement, William Solomon, Verizon Cable, license renewal.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one is opposed.
And you're authorizing me effectively to sign on the board's behalf based on your firm, right?
Yes, that is implicit in your motion, right, Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, now we are at, it is 7:42, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Because I know Elm Street is a popular topic, why don't we quickly do a Fields and Courts update, Mr. Plex, if you just want to give us a quick readout of how the forum went, if you don't mind?
Of course, so Michelle ran a great forum on Fields and Courts, I want to say it was about 10 days ago, it was well-attended, and we got good feedback, people are generally in favor of the projects. The feedback that we did get, however, was, we like these projects, the pricing seems reasonable, we want to help you move forward, be mindful of how this may go over when you get to town meeting, and so we talked about that a bit. I explained the board's strategy to come to town meeting with a package of different infrastructure investments that we'd be asking the town to move forward for, there seemed to be general support for that. The caveat was from the folks attending that we need to make sure it's a real proposal, so we can't have a meat and potatoes proposal for Fields and Rec and for, say, Town Hall, but then forget about schools. So we would need to make sure that when we go to fall town meeting, we have meaningful progress to show on all of those fronts, so we don't end up with a group of folks who are concerned that their pet issue isn't being attended to.
Okay. One thing I might raise to get some of the board's feedback on too, is with Fields and Courts, from a financing standpoint, we've been discussing various options, CPC funding, potential debt exclusion, maybe see what we have with free cash, and trying to figure out what might be the best mix, including now that we have a newly constituted CPC that is ready to get up and rearing. I can just update you that this is something the Long-Term Finance Committee has been discussing, including the prospect of also using CPC maybe for some of those other infrastructure projects, and so maybe we do a blend of CPC with a potential debt exclusion for a part of Fields and Courts. I don't know how folks feel about that, or if they have any feelings they want me to relay on that point.
I would just briefly add, and I apologize, I'll be quick.
That's all right.
I think it's a good idea to have a blend of different funding sources, it's a good idea to bring CPC in early, to make sure we can manage their feedback and make sure we have their support. And Ellen, I apologize, I cut you-
No, 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 that's okay. So I was telling Michelle earlier, I raced home, I blew off my social plans, which, like, killed me, but to watch it, and it was quarter of eight, and I'm like, oh my God, I forgot to turn it on, but I rewatched, I watched it on YouTube, I encourage everybody, it's short, it's like 24, 25 minutes. Chris is right, the feedback was really good and very, how do I say this? What I appreciated about the feedback, and Chris, you mentioned it, is how everybody was like concerned about the bigger picture, you know? And it wasn't just a bunch of booster clubs there, yeah, we want another field, we want another this, they were really concerned about the bigger picture, so I think our message about that is getting out, so I thought that was very good. I had, when we started, Chris, we met with Jennifer, she ran for me the town expenditure reports for CPC and capital projects through June 30th, and there's been a lot of money allocated to Beechwood, to Beechwood Playground, to the Beechwood Basketball Courts, to Milliken, Milliken Fields, Milliken Field Study, baseball, field improvement, baseball concession, you know, Milliken Field Concession Stand, across a lot of different things, and it's about $400,000, so I think that could be helpful. Now, Michelle, you know, we need to vet these numbers to make sure that, you know, it's not, not everything is encumbered, but that there's still the money there and it hasn't been transferred out. These are all appropriations from town meeting.
Yep.
So that can also be a source of existing money that...
Hasn't yet been spent.
Hasn't yet been spent.
So existing balances and prior projects that may be available.
Right, so there was $58,000 allocated for the Beechwood Basketball Court, which hasn't been spent yet, and in your presentation, you said you're going to wait for the fence to come down, because it makes more sense to do it. So there's 58,000 that can come off of that project, because it's already sitting here. So we should really look at all of that and make it part of, part of the financing thing. The only comment I have, I have two comments. The, at Deer Hill School, and I appreciate the need for additional fields and playing and opportunities for kids to play, the parking is horrific, and it's horrific on a good day when nothing is going on, and it just, we have to, if we're going to make a field to be utilized with lights, day and night, we're really going to have to figure out the parking and the traffic flow out of there, because it's not, it's not going to be easy. And then the second comment on the wall, it's going to be down at the library?
Yep.
It won't alleviate the high school age kids and middle school age kids from bouncing the ball on the walls at the high school, because they're not, they're not going to travel down, unless they're playing pickup basketball, they're not going to travel down there. And maybe phase two of this, we think of maybe putting one of those walls up at the high school.
I'm glad you brought that up. I did get a specific comment from someone suggesting that we're starting to pack that field behind the library a bit, so maybe the lacrosse wall could move to where we have some actual lacrosse practices. Deer Hill suggested the high school would be another option, so...
Milliken Field might be another, yeah.
I think that's something we should explore with Michelle.
Okay, all right. By the way, it was great, thank you.
And a lot of what you both were discussing, we did, Michelle and I discussed extensively, including with the lacrosse stakeholders about placement, including, for example, there was concern about lacrosse wall in Deer Hill closer to the woods, where it's sort of isolated, and they liked more the library area, because it was well-lit, it was more public, there wasn't as much of a concern about safety, but there was definitely a back and forth, so I just provide that as background. We also looked into parking and trying to put more parking in Deer Hill, which was quite expensive, unfortunately, but Michelle can go through all of that, and we should continue to think that through. But Ellen, you raise an excellent point about existing CPC balances and what they are as a practical matter, and maybe Paul on CPC, maybe one of the first things, and if CPC can't do it for whatever reason, the select board, I think it's within our purview to do it too, is to do some diligence on what the status is of those projects, because there's a lot of outstanding authorizations for various projects that may or may not be occurring, and that the-
That we may have the money for.
That the select board would need to re-up on a town warrant to reauthorize that money, and so if there's money just sitting out there that's not being used, it would be important to know that, to see maybe if there's an opportunity to free some of that up, whether on a town project or otherwise.
We're meeting on the 16th.
Okay.
So we're starting initial, so we'll elect-
Just sort of like an audit to start.
Chair, vice-chair, and then what we'll do is I'll get an update on what projects we have outstanding, and then we're going to go with that.
And Jennifer can certainly help you on that.
And same with capping budgets. So if you want to ask Jennifer Mullen for the all-town expenditure report for CPC?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you for the update. Why don't we turn to Elm Street, and then we'll do schools, just because that was slated for 7:45, so Elm Street. Mr. Joyce, would you mind providing us with an update?
Sure. I don't know if you have a lot of those in the coffee theater.
Thank you, yes, if you wouldn't mind providing your email, I've got lots to miss, a lot of other emails in my inbox.
So at the last meeting, they discussed Elm Street, there was a vote taken to-
Brian, do you mind sitting here, the mic just trying to zoom, wanting to hear this? Thank you.
So there was a vote taken to keep the alignment of Elm Street generally the same, and direction to take a look at the sidewalks to see if there was room to expand it in the current footprint. So I walked a few times, the contractor and with Carl Sostito, and what you had before you were kind of three options. The price we have for 559,000, that's simply just the paving of the roads and the walkways without touching the curbing at all. And after walking the curbing with the contractor and Carl, and I'm sure that people will walk it daily, see that the curbing is, you know, it's at different elevations, it's askew in some cases, so if we did that, it would look kind of bad as far as the pavement on the sidewalk. So to reset the curbing in its existing location, that would bring the price tag up to 743,000 Again, that's exactly in the same location in plan view. It would just set it at an elevation, so it's all an even reveal, and it would be a nice even tub. If we, so we looked at the curbing relative to the property lines, and can we expand the sidewalk on both sides or on either side in the current footprint? And the only way we could do that is to take some more landscaping, either front yards or some of the landscape in front of people's houses. And in walking in and talking with some of the residents, there was a pretty big opposition to any of that.
Option three.
Yeah. So, option three would be the price tag. So, that's $960,000, which is kind of the price tag we were looking at with the original design or the design that was put forward. And that's moving the curbing out to make more room for sidewalk expansion or sidewalk width. But when you do that on either side, then you have to modify the drainage basins. So, it's, that's why that price tag kicks up pretty significantly.
And we currently don't have the money in the budget for the $960.
We do not, without taking away from other, you know, planned projects. But I will say this. So, all of these options start with a mill and overlay, a level course. And so, it's not to lose the paving season, and, you know, it's going by fast. We've given direction to the contractor to go in and do the mill and level course, which will give us a nice, smooth, drivable surface for the winter. Now, if you choose any one of these options, we could proceed with the sidewalk work. But my recommendation is that we do the mill and level, and you have a nice drivable surface for the winter. Leave the sidewalks and curbing as-is. And then, we do that along with the top course in the spring. And that way, it gives, you know, more time for deliberation, maybe more funding. You know, if grants come in, then we can, we could see if we can leverage that funding to do curbing. I think Michelle is putting in for more ADA grant funding. And that's above and beyond the one step that we talked about before. So, that's basically where we are. And that mill and level is just a little over $300,000. So, we'd be spending that in the next few weeks along with doing Margin Street, Smith Place, and a piece of Atlantic Avenue.
Right. Excuse me, but I kind of missed a little bit of the, I guess, option two of widening the streets.
Yeah. So...
I just wasn't, I was reading something here.
Yeah. So, I guess I'll narrow it down briefly. So, option one is just paving surfaces, not touching the curbing at all. It might look like hell with the curbing kind of askew.
Right.
Option, that's $559,000. Option two is resetting the curbing in its exact location, but it would reset it so it's all one elevation, haven't even reveal. That's $743,000. Now, if we wanted to expand the sidewalks, and I should mention that the sidewalks as-is are ADA compliant with four-foot width. So, as-is, they're okay. But there was a, you know, a lot of folks wanted like a six-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk to allow for pedestrians and maybe bicyclists or other, just to have a more width. If you did that, you would, the only way to do it without taking some front lawns is to kick the curb out into the street. And if you do that, then you have to modify or do some drainage work. And that price tag is $960,000.
So, option two, we have four-foot sidewalks, new curbing, ADA compliant. Everything works perfectly. You don't go into all the other stuff, and we do that quickly.
Right. And that's at $743,000. Again, we can, we could do the curbing and the sidewalks and the top course on the pavement in the spring, which is my recommendation, and just, and do the mill and overlay, which we've already given direction for. We should get a schedule hopefully in the next couple of weeks. But I imagine it'll be, within the next three to six weeks, paving crews will be out there doing the mill and level course.
So, if we go to that option three, that's when we start taking property and the main and all that kind of stuff, and you take people's front yards and all that stuff?
So, it's, yeah. Or you could just go into the street. But then, you're modifying the drainage. Yeah. It's costly, and it's, you know, we would need to vet exactly what we're going to do with that option.
If I could just ask for one clarification.
Sure.
Does option three require taking people's front yards?
No. If you go towards the street, no.
Mr. Gray.
All right, Brian. Just looking at this, I'm going by public opinion, what we've seen. Normally, the meeting was pretty well-attended, as you saw. Probably leave it as it is.
Right.
So, what if we just do this? We pave the road, get it done, lock it in, put the safety measures up, crosswalks around the cove, bicycle lanes, get it all set and done. And if we have to readjust the curbs, I mean, the sidewalks maybe can wait till next year. Grant money comes in. But grant money's a big if. And if we take the grant money, I'm under the impression that we have to follow Sardina's plan to the letter if we take the money.
So, I don't know that, yeah.
Have to follow it, which includes the parking around Cove, the way he remarked, because it wasn't erased. So, everything that he's laid out, we have to follow that in the plan. That's what we got on the roads and sidewalks, if we were approved, because that's the grant. That's, I'm sorry, that's the plan that was submitted.
Yeah. That's potentially the case, but usually you get the, you know, all the rules along with whatever grant award you get. So, I'm not sure what, which one of the one-step grant program it would be in, but one step is kind of a funnel for all state grants and...
All right. Now, that was the special one we talked in, roads and sidewalks, that we did...
That's it, yeah.
Apply for the $916,000, I think it was.
Yep.
And to do the road, and we have the paving guys coming in.
Right.
So, instead of just a mill and overlay it, if we pave it, have done with it. And we can revisit the sidewalks next year. I mean, if we reset the curb, so what are we looking at? I mean, the sidewalks themselves aren't in abominable shape. The general consensus from the, that I got from all the people that were here is leave it as it is.
Right.
I know everybody has a wish list. They'd like to bury poles, lines. And I'd be fantastic if we could do it. We could do it all over town, but I think...
Yeah. The poles and the electrical work, that's... I asked National Grid for a price point on that, but I can tell you just from historical perspective, it's more expensive than all the price tags we're talking about here to put underground electric or even move poles around.
So, I'm sorry. I'll slide last question. On burying the lines underground, is the CHP project going to bury that under, those underground? Is that a part of their plan? Do we know? Because if we're going to lift up the road, presumably that would be a good time for them to bury it.
So, is the harbor development? Yeah. So, they were, they're doing an underground drop from the nearest pole. They're not burying, there's no overhead connection. It basically goes under the sidewalk to their, to a transformer, a pad-mounted transformer, I think, on site.
So, they're not going to be later looking to carve up any roads?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No, that's okay. Thanks for that. So, if we were to do what we really passed already, is to get the road paved, get the safety measures in, bike lanes and all that stuff that we put in. I'm always thinking of something we could do with an S.
Sharrows.
Thank you so much. So, we get those in, and we have that ongoing this year, right?
Right, right. And if we're going to revisit the sidewalks, I would recommend doing the curbing and the sidewalks together next spring and just getting the road, you know, from curb to curb in shape along with the painting and everything. And then, we could...
Could do that this year.
Yeah. We're scheduled to do that already. I've already given the notes to proceed because it's...
I was a little confused because I thought we were going to pave it. We got a mill and overlay it, then...
Mill and level course, yeah. So, you have a mill, level course, and then you'll come in with your top course after that.
So, we could do that this year?
Everything but the top course, yeah.
All right. We're widening up the top course. That's what I'm...
So, to do the top course, you'd want, you'd want to have the curbing done. So, we need to do the decision, are we going to do the curbing or not? So, the top course comes down and meets the curb, and then that sets your reveal. So, if we were resetting the curbing in the spring, you can come in and do the top course along with... Reset the curb, they usually cut like a foot in front of it, go in, set in concrete, and then they come back, and the top course comes and covers right up to the face of it.
Reset the curbs now, if you want?
We could reset the curbs now, as long as a decision is made on...
But if we reset the curbs now, that would have to align with when the crews are coming in to do the mill and level course.
So, the sequence would be mill and level course, and then curb crews would come in along with the... They'd set all the catch basins and structures in there. And some, you know, you've all driven newly paved roads. It'll stick up for a few weeks, and then the top course comes in after that. And we have a fully paved road.
What we're really looking at right now, my hand decision between doing the sort of road-only work for $559, or doing everything for $743, including brand-new curbs and level sidewalks. So, that's about a differential of $200,000 that... And that's today's prices. Who knows what it will be in the spring, but...
So, this is, this is the contract price through the spring term?
The spring, okay.
It was just awarded this year.
So, the question is, do we want to wait and do it now? Or do we want to wait and see if the grant comes in and potentially be able to use some of that grant money? But that assumes the grant comes in.
Right. And it's not just a one-stop grant. There's, I'm not sure what the grant was Michelle was putting in for, but it was an ADA. It's basically an ADA grant.
There's a complimentary grant, one I hear about till November, that would do the nicer...
But that was for all of our roads, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not just, it's not just for anything. It's for all over. But it would be easier to do that in conjunction with putting the top or something. They would just pull it cleaner. And we won't get that award till...
Till, I'm sorry, November?
November.
That's the ADA grant. We put in a 80 grant, and Michelle found that today. And that would be, it's a whole series of things, including playgrounds. But it's also for these nicer, you know, you know, you know, the...
Yeah, yeah.
They're all over town, in various locations.
So, how do I say this? I've been very conflicted about this whole thing. And if I go back to the Elm Street Working Corridor Group and what they were charged with to do, and then the sidewalk and safety and connectivity working group, you know, and what they were charged to do, and Paul was a big proponent of that. And the conceptual idea was to take this corridor, in paraphrasing Paul, get the freeway element out of it. Make it, make it something, you know, as special as we can make it. And I don't know, but then we heard that we have, you know, the road is horrible, and we're going to have to fix another front end of a fire truck coming out of the fire station. And the residents just want it paved because it's deplorable. And I'm trying to think of how we can take care of that paving need and/or wait for the grant, and then maybe do some kind of the beautification between the Elm Street plan, which actually, Paul, it kind of answered your concern about the parking around CHP because they pulled the green island all the way up to CHP so that you didn't have that corner coming around Margin Street. I just, I feel badly when we have people volunteer to do something, and they do it, and then we don't do it. And we've had two groups do that.
You talking about the Elm Street Corridor Group?
Yep. Yeah, the Elm Street and the sidewalk committee group on both groups. And right now, it, right now, we're just, we're going to pave it. And I think we need to pave it for safety reasons. And I just don't know how we do that and then get some grant money in. And maybe we can't do all of it because we've already paved it. But how can we get some of the elements of what was desired to begin with in the project? Maybe next spring. I don't know.
Thing is with that project right now is we had, and I, you know, we had a bunch of the, as we know, of the residents. So, we've got to go with that flow. They were reversed to it. It was either taking, they were going to lose land. So, they said, "Widen the sidewalk. Want to take care of the strip because the strip is problematic to a degree." There was no consensus. And with the Elm Street Working Group, the consensus again about moving the island, pushing it up to give CHP a front lawn, was really kind of a no-brainer. That did not mitigate traffic. That was in the meetings. And that came through with the fire chief, the police chief. Because if you're coming down that road, that island stops traffic if you're moving along. The road really speeds on Elm anyways.
Yeah.
But you have to hit that island. And if you're going straight, the oaks is a buttress right there because you've got to take a left. So, that's going to slow you down unless you're going to drive into a wall. But that opened up that whole area, as you can see, it gave a kind of a freeway look. It might have been narrower. But if you're driving down that road fast, there's no island to stop you. You're going to whip around the corner, and someone could get killed. So, that's why that decision was made, to keep the island as is. Plus, it's, you know, it's a war. It's a veterans memorial.
Yeah. I'm just saying that...
It would have been a large amount of money to move it.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying it had, it had some elements to it, and the plan we saw had some elements to it. And how, how do we kind of accomplish the goal of making that street a little bit more picturesque, a little bit more cohesive? And I heard what you said about the residents, and I agree with you. They just want a safe road. They don't want to give up parking. They don't feel the need for wider sidewalks. And then, you know, so then that begs the question, the next time we charge a group of people to do something, we really need to think long and hard about it.
You're absolutely right about that.
I think the charges need to have a budget and more specific direction from the Select Board, which is what we have been doing a lot more with, I think, the selection Select Board.
Can I get this, if I can correctly characterize what I think Brian's saying is that the safety, the first phase that they're going to be able to discover that now.
Right, right.
The board doesn't have to make decisions on any nicer elements you might want to add until the spring or later, after we find out the grants. Because the top course probably will wait till the spring anyway. But you could go ahead right now. The problem is that if you do go ahead right now, then you, I would recommend you think about the $743 number just to make the curbs sound right. Because if you do the paving and don't do the curbs, you get, there's going to be a huge criticism from the community about how it looks and tripping asses and stuff.
Yeah.
That's why I'm...
Yeah, the sidewalks are on that.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we've...
Are or not?
...thought on this, and we've kind of come to a decision that when you, the minute you start getting into putting widening the sidewalks and putting new culverts in and drainage and all that, now we're into a whole different ballgame. I don't think that Elm Street, if it was cleaned up and properly paved and sidewalk, is an ugly street at all. I walk it several times a week. I don't think it's a, it's this eyesore that is being portrayed. And I think it's a pretty, you know, attractive, you know, street. The width is very good because it gives us the needed parking. It also gives us enough width of a street so when bicycles and baby carriages decide to go down there, which they do all the time, there, it's, I would not narrow that at all because that just creates hazards for bicycles and people walking double. And people walk double all the time, or bicycles drive double. I do think, and I'm not think that we want to go anywhere near having to take people's properties in their front yards. I think a very well-done paving job with a proper curb done, it's ADA compliant. It is four feet, which is what's needed. And, you know, I think the option number two kind of gets it done. And we just can't keep trying to figure it out. Jean's point is very clear. I mean, we didn't do that with zoning. The zoning bylaw is now coming back to the Select one. And we need, in the beginning, in the future, we need a budget. We need to tell people what they can spend. I felt very badly for the people on Town Hall. But they didn't really follow the charge, and they worked hard. They were tireless, and I like them all. I'm not sure they like me now, but, but we do have to, you know, your point. We do have a responsibility in the future, pay a little more attention. But for the here and now, I think option two works, and we just need to get this done.
Okay. Chris Plax, how do you feel? Option one, option two, option... Chris Plax, how do you feel, option one, option two, option three, do you have a preference?
I'm in favor of Brian's plan to go ahead, which it sounds like you already are with the mill and the, excuse me, if I'm getting it wrong, the, the level.
Level course, yeah.
Level course. I think where we dropped the ball the last few times around is we didn't get appropriate input to the people who actually, from the people who actually live there. So if we do what Brian is recommending and we come back to the decision between option two and option three in the spring, that gives us the opportunity to engage the people who live on Elm Street, tell them how expensive it is to bury the power lines, tell them how expensive it is to move the poles. And we can talk to them about the impact that widening the sidewalks would have on parking.
And about whose front lawn gets taken.
But to be clear, option three would not require taking any front lawns. It would move into the street, so my two cents is, we go with Brian's recommendation to do the mill and level course, get input from the community with a hard deadline of the spring, that we have to come up with a plan that goes between option two and three. And we provide the information about why other things, burying the power lines, moving the poles, wouldn't work.
I wouldn't mind waiting to, to the spring, but in the spring, we still have the same overall thing, which is how much of our money are we spending on one street? And we have streets all over that don't have any curbs or any sidewalks and you're literally going a front lawn into the, the street and I see in, in Cushing Road and Pleasant, they could probably, there's a lot of kids going up and down there. So you could make the argument there, on Beechwood, you can make arguments all over town where there's great need of, of, of various improvements, safety improvements. So I think we've spent quite enough money on Elm Street as, as it, as we have already. Anyway, but we can put it off till the spring.
Ellen, what do you think?
What do I think? I think we're gonna pave the road, I would, I would go with Brian's suggestion.
Paul?
I favor option two. I'll say why, because I think the Elm Street residents spoke. Now, does everything require tweaking? Is everything gonna be perfect? Nope, it's not. And nobody gets exactly what they want, you hope you can give them as much as you can. But Elm Street needs to be paved, we know that, we've heard it from the chief, we've heard it from the fire department, and, you know, the island has got to be locked in, is the way I look at it. Because I think it just opens it up to further push, to have to move things, if we're just going, oh, we can still move that. And again, we're back right where we started, we've talked about this since I got on the select board, since I was on planning board, we've talked about it. So Elm Street is, we just got to get it done, get it over with, get it behind us, we've got a number of roads and sidewalks. But I think in option two, if we're setting the curbing in its current location, paving the street sidewalks, doesn't mean it can't be revisited at some point in time. But it's maintenance and it's long overdue, you know, real long, then we move on, like South Main and all these other projects that are kicking us in the tail, and just getting it done. So that's why I would favor option two.
Got to be clear, I, I would also.
Yeah, I'd say I'm a little bit torn and I am inclined towards option two in part because if we're gonna ask the town pay more taxes for roads and sidewalks and we have money right now we can use to address probably one of the largest roads that from a public perception is in disrepair, I'm concerned about just continuing to kick the cane down the road and the only reason I hesitate is because of the Elm Street grant and I do wonder, even if we do option two, can we still preserve the option of going back and seeing once the dust settles, so to speak, you know, maybe there is an option for beautification with some of that grant money, but we'd have to see the rules and requirements of that grant money. We could be waiting and losing a whole season, much to the, I think, chagrin of the neighborhood and many of our residents and not get the grant. And then we're just sort of, you know, back here making the same argument and decision and so, I think option three is gonna be complicated ultimately, even if we get the grant for a variety of reasons and so I think we're really looking at option one and two, I think we all know we at least have to do option two at a minimum to reset the curbing. And so the question is whether we do it now or whether we wait until later. I can just share the feedback that I've gotten from the residents, appears to be let's widen the roads, but let's do it now, and so it's a little bit of a.
Widen the sidewalks.
I'm sorry, widen the sidewalk, widen the sidewalk, but like, let's do it now and so we're not going to be able to necessarily widen the sidewalks, given everything we know, right? So those are all the considerations, including, again, if we're gonna ask the town to pay more taxes to do, to address our roads and sidewalks, I would really like to make some progress with the money we do have right now, rather than sitting on it, although, again, the grant is hovering out there in my mind. Yes, Paul?
My only concern about the grant is if the grant comes, we could revisit it, but again, from what we got on roads and sidewalks is we have to follow Mr. Sardi's plan, basically on the grant that we applied for, that Road to Sidewalks put in, and Jayden Perry put in. I'm for two, I'm for getting it done, and I'll say, so I get the safety measures in place. People may be able to have a little bit of the summer and fall places to walk. You know, we do know the, the condos are going up, but, you know, once they're settled in, but we have a road. You know, I think that people will be, will settle in and be content with what they have, that's why I'm for it now.
Clarifying question for Brian, one of the things we heard loud and clear was people didn't want to lose parking. And that especially included street parking. If we went with option three, which would widen the sidewalks, would that reduce the amount of available parking on Elm Street?
So we could, we could push the curbing towards the, towards the center of the road, not as much as the seven or eight feet we were proposing before and, and still have parking on both sides, but it would be variable because it's, some, some spots are 40 plus feet wide and other spots are like 30, 30 something.
So, so your estimate is that going with option three would result in less parking than option two?
It would be, yes, it would be less, less, uh, less area to park.
So my last question, and I'll leave you alone, is by going on option two, since, you know, I know there was a push to park Ron Cove Street, which my goodness, didn't fly. So we still preserve all that overflow going up and down Elm. The fire department seemed pretty pleased with that whole arrangement, if I'm not incorrect. It's kind of leaving it alone because the charging radius and the parking and the neighbors both didn't want to give up parking, understandably so, since the 73 something lost part of their driveways. But I just think that's the best thing, you know, we get it done and.
What about this, would this be an option, let's say we go with option two right now, but if we get the grant, we can look at beautification measures, including reconsidering, I'm just gonna say it, a grass strip maybe with some trees on the north side. Because there it looks like the neighbors might be a little more inclined and maybe are less concerned about the parking issues and, and more open because they don't have as short driveways and so if we get the extra money to do that extra work, would that be an option that we could entertain for those neighbors that seem to be okay with maybe less parking and maybe the grass strip for them, which could then beautify the street in a way that we've been sort of searching for?
So, I mean, I think the ADA grant is simply for sidewalks and ramps, I don't know that that's for beautification. The one stop grant that was submitted had the plan that left the north side virtually alone, so I can't really say whether you could kind of swap it and go to the other side, yeah, I mean, without looking at the details of the grant and what, or really talking to DOT or whoever's managing.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe not, it just depends on if we get the grant and what the rules are surrounding it. For, for anything that we do, it sounds like. All right.
So we just get something done.
All right, does anyone want to make a proposed motion for a proposed option?
I would make a motion to go with option two. And to reset the curbing in its current location, the cost of paving the street and sidewalk, reset curbing, 743,000 as compared to the paving without resetting curb at 559,000. I'd also add in that we incorporate the safety measures, measured sidewalks that, what did you call them again?
The, the sheros.
Arrows, thank you. With all the safety measures in place, when the road's complete, that would be my motion.
And Brian, is that a top layer for option two or?
So, so yeah, so just to be clear, so the decision, so we're proceeding, we've given the proceeding, the notice to proceed with the level course, but you're talking about doing the curbing now in the fall prior to winter, right? That was your motion, and, and paving a top course as well.
I'll second that.
Well, where does the money come from?
We currently have 743 in our budget to do this.
So, yeah, we have, we have the money to do that.
It's the additional that we don't have.
And let me just say something else, the top court, the sidewalks would also be paved with that.
And leveled, so you wouldn't have the.
Yeah, you'd have level curbing, sidewalks done and the roadway in its current configuration with, you know, ADA compliant widths and ramps.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Opposed? All right.
Comments?
Oh.
Just, I just have a couple of comments, just pop in.
Thank you. If someone would like to be promoted.
Okay. I don't have anybody asking for, for, if they want to be promoted, I just have comments that they sent to all.
Okay.
I can read them or, or I don't have to read them, whatever you'd like.
You can read them.
You can read them, read them, that's fine.
This is Dave LaHive, David Lynn LaHive, 55 Elm Street, please vote for option two, please, vote, do all, option two, vote this year. Widening sidewalks is not likely to be an option. Condition of any grass strip will narrow the road and reduce parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Text them back, option two passed.
Thank you, Mr. LaHive, we were on the same page. All right, okay, so thank you, Brian, for your thoughtful analysis and helpful options.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, school capital needs slash stabilization fund. Ellen, Chris, do you want to provide an update on, just very quickly, where we are? I know we've been working with the schools to try to make some progress on the facilities list.
I mean, I, I have not, I'm not involved. I have reached out to Jason, we had a quick conversation, I reached back out to him, he hasn't responded, so that's where I'm at.
I've spoken with the chair of the school committee several times, I just want to work, already our director of facilities. So the facilities is going through the, the list they have, including the AI3 assessment that was done to scrub it and to update it. The schools are also doing that and, and the goal is to bring them both together, because Nick is obviously focused really on the structure and the end stuff and the, make sure the plumbing and the heating and all that stuff kind of work. The schools, I think, have some other aspects that may be more visible, both important. The goal is to knit them together so there'll be a plan that we knit with a proposal to put a school stabilization fund. There would be a list of projects that would be available for people to see, hopefully a five to 10 year plan that would list things. Again, fungibility within year to year, but would show concrete steps as to where the proposed additional money would go. So that, that is in progress. The school committee would have a final bet at that before they'd say, yeah, we're good to go, that's in progress.
Okay, and in terms of school capital needs, I know that Mr. Joyce, as long as you hear, you just reminded me that we do have a big capital need coming in terms of an ARPA funding request as it relates to sewer. Is that something the school committee needs to weigh in on before we take action? Because we can put it on the agenda for next time, because I know it is time sensitive to get that, you know, funding underway. Because it is a school project, I just wanted to.
Below the, the, the. I think we're gonna have to defer, can we still do that?
Do you want to talk about it?
Sure.
Sure, it's a school capital need, I think we can.
So, um, so the, the ARPA funding request is for a sewer repair in front of the middle school. So there's been perennial blockages since, since they rehabbed the schools about 2001. And we camered it and the line that comes out of the front of the middle school and then takes a left along that wooden godrail that's at the top of the playing field, goes right underneath the parking spaces that are along that. That line, it goes down about a foot, has a dip and then goes back up, so that, that creates blockages that, that generally cost, you know, two to 5,000 per year. The cost to dig all that up and reset the pipe at a proper elevation is about 35,000, so the request is to do that. So we wouldn't have the perennial blockages. I've, I've been out there with John Mills and he's aware of, you know, he's usually the first to call. And the blockage isn't just, you know, blockage is also is an overflow of a manhole and sewage in the parking lot there, so it's, that's, that's basically what that is, but it's a deep pipe, it's about 10 feet, which makes it a little more complicated, that's why it's so expensive. So there's some soil support there.
Vote on next time if you need to vote on funds and.
Just on the schedule of it, it's about two weeks to do that work. So with school starting at, I think it's August 30th.
But this faculty and staff are back, like the week before, they have professional development and training, I should know what date they go back, but.
So it sounds like you would like, under the 48 hour rule, with respect to this request, us to vote on it right now, to devote ARPA funds?
Yeah, so that was the intent for this, so I've got a commitment from the contractor, if you got the notice receipt tomorrow, it'll be done in two weeks. And it, again, it doesn't stop having to use the facilities inside, but it, you know, they wouldn't be able to park in that particular area, so.
We have the ARPA money.
Yes.
And is this the, coming from the, the ARPA money we have to apply for and then get reimbursed for out of the special water and sewer?
We would do that, and if there's any problem with the stuff, ARPA money of our own, we can cover it if we need to.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to?
Can I just share these dates with Brian so he's aware? Yeah, so August 22nd, 23rd, 24th, new teacher orientation, August 28th, all teachers. August 29th, all teachers. So you just have to have the middle school staff park in the student parking lot.
Sure. So two weeks from tomorrow is August 23rd. So, and, and that was on the outside of, of the schedule, so.
Okay.
I think if we give them the notice tomorrow morning, they can get cracking.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Making a motion to approve the ARPA funds to repair and the.
Middle school sewer.
Middle, middle school sewer.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed.
Right.
Brian, question offline.
Speaking up, can I, is that all right?
Does it relate to school capital needs?
No.
Then no, sorry.
Laced with water guard.
Call me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Senior, ten minute.
So quickly, I'm gonna sit here as a, as a, to seek, to seek applicants for three positions that the town is looking to fill. We have a part-time kitchen coordinator at the senior center, it's a new position to help coordinate that, if someone has restaurant experience or food service experience, it's not full-time, it'd be great, so we, that's been posted on our website, so it's available. We also are seeking an IT tech, more of a starting level IT person. We've had, we've filled it not well, so we've tried, a couple of folks have worked out, so we're trying to find the perfect fit. So if this, if anyone knows anyone who's looking to, off the top of my head, I don't remember, is that also on the website? It's, it's heavily on the school side, but unexclusive, so doing, again, a lot of things. The, and the last one is in, in my office, it's a, it's an HR and time manager, office assistant, is replacing Betsy, who is going off to the police department to become their executive assistant. So we need to backfill that and with Michelle serving as the, as the town manager, acting research director, have another person on the, the state of work on HR, and also back on Tracy is really helpful, so, again, that's also posted on the website. And again, we have, we have a fast moving office that you have to journal a lot of things, so we're looking for someone who actually enjoys that level of excitement, engagement with all of you folks on our. So we're looking for someone who actually enjoys that level of excitement and engagement with all of you folks on a regular basis and residents and dealing with some quirky HR stuff and doing regular mission stuff. So we try, it's a unique position, be a lot of fun for the right person. So if anyone is interested, again, the positions are on the website, call our office if anyone's interested, somebody just wants to acquire. And I'll, I'll send you the salaries to all of you. And again, I mentioned earlier, my office, Michelle today filed an ADA grant, open here in the fall. It will not only provide funding for upgrades for handicapped accessible indoor beachwood and library playgrounds, but also other improvements around town for senior access and curbs. I think there's some fencing event too to protect some areas as well, so it's a real. And since we did that, we won a grant, did the assessments, these are all being based on that. So we're, we're in a very favorable position, hopefully to get a big chunk of all of the requests because we did a grant assessment together, so following all the, all the checks and balances on that. And just two quick updates, on the 17th is the planned ribbon cutting for habitat, ceremony of ribbon cutting and groundbreaking, I'm sorry, for the habitat project. More information will be coming out from Justin soon, so if anyone's available, it'll just be a ceremony, a groundbreaking. They haven't actually, I don't think quite dig the foundation, but this is started? Yes? Okay, anything else?
Sorry, nope.
And the Millican Field project is also finally nearing its end. So we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting of those bathrooms for the fall. So it was just getting a plumber to finally do some of the final work has been very difficult. That said, that is finally there, the neighbors are happy, we used the same exact site and just added three bathrooms. So it's, it's going to be a great addition, but the real bathroom is there as opposed to the cora potty. So that is good news and that we'll get some updates on, hopefully that'll come early September when the field's really getting going to use. So it's another ribbon cutting that we'll be adding soon, so that's my quick update.
Chris, quick question, how is the cleaning on the town hall handled, does that contract?
We have, we have, we've had a contract, we're, I think the company that we've been using, our state contractor is going out of business. So we're actually, when I talked to Nick a couple of weeks ago, we're vetting other contractors to pick up the contract.
So there's been some talk that it's being transferred from a contract position to a employee position?
At this point, we're, you know, I'm waiting to have Nick come back with some, some assessment, so.
Well, I mean, I don't want to.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna, whatever we do has to fit with an existing budget.
Well, no, I didn't ask that. We've gotten some emails suggesting that positions that are outside, contract positions are being converted into employee positions. For cleaning. And I don't want to go into the details, but I want to know if contract positions are converted into.
We're not converting. So we, we, we once had part-time employees do it, then we went to a contract service. It's kind of gone back and forth over time depending on its availability. The contractor that we're using, the contract, not, it's not a person, it's a company, is leaving the business. And they seem to do this, they seem to work for a few years and then the schools have similar challenges. So we're, alternatives are being vetted to see what other companies are out there that might be able to run the service. And it's really very limited, it's really just town hall, we don't use them for much else. Because we have a part-timer that actually does the libraries and all the things. So if, if that, if Nick comes back and says we can't find a company, we need to have a part-time person do it. That's what, I'll, I'll let you all know, that, that's, we're not, we're not converting, we're trying to find a service to do the work. And if it doesn't, if you can't find somebody, they're having as much trouble staffing as anyone else does, the cleaning companies.
The concern, of course, is that when you bring employees on, you also bring the long-term pension obligation, healthcare forever.
If you did, it would be part-time, it would not be a benefited full-time position. If, if it did go, because it's historically been a part-time job, because it's only cleaning town hall, right? It's only a few hours a day, five days. So it's always, it's less than 19 hours, Jack, so you wouldn't be at a full-time position, even if that was the end result because we couldn't find a company, so.
Please keep me motivated because I think, I think the employee growth is a matter of concern.
If you have any, if anyone has any cleaning companies that are interested in the business, please set them up.
I'll check, Brian.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, returning to the most exciting part of the evening, select board comments. Mr. Creighton, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I think we're, we've had another good meeting and I think it's, it's nice that we've addressed the Elm Street. And I think we also need to be, not only as a board, I think, and the town is that, and Paul Grady is doing an admirable job. The other streets in the town need attention. And when we spend money on one part of the town, we have to be aware that we need to equitably spend it through all the other elements of the town, so. And I think we've done a good job on, on that, making some progress, so, well done.
Ms. Moore?
The, I, I mentioned to Gene earlier, I'd like to, you know, put on a future agenda and maybe, maybe this gets moved to next, next year's town meeting, but to revisit the conversation about the water bottle selling ban. And not because I'm for it or against it, I, I think conservation, you know, of plastics is, is really important. But I wasn't, I wasn't content with how it was presented and by whom it was presented. And the fact that there is so much research out there that we should take advantage of to really vet this idea. I do know businesses that would be hurt by not selling cases of water or bottles of water. There are booster groups that run concession stands in schools and fields that would be hurt by it. I just think we need to vet it a little bit more. And I think we were a bit hasty in suggesting it become a citizens petition. I, I think if we're going to have a bylaw such as this, we should, we should vet it, we should propose it, we should, if we believe in it, we, we should present it. And so that's, I just wanted to bring that up. I've been uncomfortable about it since, since we had the presentation on it. And again, it's not because I'm against it, I just think we need more information on it and we need to really understand the impact in our community. Mr. Pliss?
If I could just use my comment to respond, I completely agree with the interest in vetting it out. We also need to make sure that we, we don't construct such barriers of analysis that we stifle what could be a good idea. So I do think it's a good idea, I'm open to the analysis. But I think we need to hear both sides, if someone's saying it's going to hurt me, then we also have to hear from the other side that says it's going to make for a cleaner faucet going forward, so.
Right.
Want to make sure we're not just throwing hurdles in front of somebody who's trying to participate in town issues.
Right, well, and, and I guess my point was also, there's financial implication on the water filling stations. And if, if it gets approved, we don't know how many we need in town to hit all the areas. We, we don't know, it was stated in, we didn't even get context to the bylaw in our packet. I, I pulled it off of Facebook, so that was kind of one issue I had to find out where, where is this coming from? And the, the Facebook post indicated, well, there'll be some fundraising or maybe some grants and maybe they're 5,000, but we don't know. And I'm, I'm just saying, we need to understand that part of it.
And I apologize for interrupting, but we can't deliberate because it is select board comments. And so we can certainly have this as an agenda item, or we can flesh out all of these, but I don't want to run afoul of open meeting law either.
Yeah. But we've already deliberated it, so it's okay. You can deliberate some, you can talk about something you've already deliberated. It's not, it's not.
If it should be an agenda item.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just say I'm thoroughly comfortable because I'm dead set against it. I think if we're going to take away that, we take away Coke, Gatorade, root beer, beer, anything plastic, we take away. Why water, which kids drink by the gallon, they need it. And I think it's just, and towns that have already passed it have revoked it. So, but back to my comment, so that's just, I'm very comfortable going dead set against it and I'll stand, I'll voice myself my own retired in saying that. I think tonight was good, I'm glad, thrilled, actually. We came up with a final decision for Elm Street because it's been going down the road. And this board got together, I think this board's been very proactive in moving ahead, so I'm thrilled with it, getting Elm Street done. Moving on to bigger and worse, because we've got a lot of stuff in front of us, guys, each and every one of us. And so, you know, everyone we tackle is one less we have on our plate the next day. Thanks to the board and Chris and Michelle. I want to thank Michelle and Chris, by the way, again, in public for the work we're doing now.
So I would say to our residents that the select board has been putting in a tremendous amount of work, both in public session and executive session to really try to set the town up for success into the future. And I imagine that you're going to start to see the fruits of that labor publicly in September as we head into fall town season, fall meeting season, where we're really trying to make our select board goals come to fruition. As I hope you see, we are trying to make decisions, hopefully not too quickly, in taking into account both the opinions of our citizens and residents, but also the big picture and financial implications. And that's something that we're, you know, trying to move the town forward with a whole bunch of new work and old decisions or old work that we're trying to finally make decisions on and move forward. And so I appreciate the hard work and the multiple meetings, including during the summer, of our board and other boards and all the volunteers and our town staff. And I know that, you know, there's a lot of people who have a lot of different desires to see the select board act, whether it's something like the Oyster Farms in Bassington Beach to other, you know, big infrastructure issues that we know are hovering out there. And so we hear you and we're working hard and get ready for an exciting fall.
You're here.
On that note.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, hold on, we have approval of minutes, sorry, Jack, for June 27, 2023? Close, very close.
Some move.
She hasn't asked for a motion yet, did you ask?
I did, well, Jack was reading my mind.
Are these the minutes that we asked to have them?
No, these are not the particular minutes.
Thank you. Oh, I've got faces.
Oh, Chris didn't get to his select work comments.
I did.
You did, I'm sorry, I take that back, I apologize.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second.
Who made the motion?
Jack did, and then I believe Paul seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. All right, now, there is no topics not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours. We just sort of dumped that a little bit with the sewer issue that we had to get fixed. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.